The walking excavator is what we use to traverse and stabilize and mow the canals in the various locations. It's a very specialized piece of equipment with a specialized skill set for the operators. They were originally designed to operate on the side of mountains, but there's been uses of finament to be used within swamps and canals. Its main role is to traverse into the canal to remove the sediment that's been washed away from the banks and into the bottom of the canal and reestablish that onto the banks. We've got to bring the wet dirt from the bottom, set it on top, let it dry a little bit, and then it gets repacked into the banks to re contour and also to open up the capacity of the canal. Once that is complete, then we come back and either timeframe of the job starting to stopping, either Mother Nature has started to grow grass back through. If that is not the case, then we will actually order sod to be laid down to help ensure that the dirt that's been repacked stays in place.
In a world where loyal companions await, one place stands as their beacon of hope. The Pet Resource Center of Hillsborough County, where you can adopt your very own superhero. Adopt a dog, find your sidekick, and unlock the power of unconditional love. Suit up, show up, and adopt today. For more information, visit hcfl.gov/pets.
Good morning and welcome to the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners Quarterly Award and Recognition Ceremony. We are going to have the invocation and pledge given by our chaplain, Commissioner Myers. You are recognized.
Thank you. Let us stand, please. I cite the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. O gracious having the Father, we come thanking you for another day. We thank you, Father, because of the quarterly awards and recognition ceremony that we are in right now. I ask a special blessing for our employees who have gone above and beyond the duty to receive this recognition today and to our partners who serve the community as well. Thank you for all that they have done this quarter and all that they're going to do in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you. Today's ceremony celebrates the employees and residents whose work and accomplishments help make Hillsborough County a great place to live, work, and play. Out of respect for all of those being recognized today, we ask that all attendees remain until the conclusion of the ceremony if you are able to do so. Commissioner Cohen, will you please present our first three recognitions?
Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome. We are going to start this morning with Chelsea Waldeck from Pet Resources, and I'd like to ask you to join me up here at the podium. Good morning. The Pet Resource Center, also known as the PRC, and its dedicated staff have done an amazing job in providing love and care for dogs and cats waiting to be adopted and welcomed into their forever homes. However, in June 2024, the PRC staff faced a difficult challenge. The county experienced a serious outbreak of canine influenza, also known as dog flu. Despite keeping symptomatic dogs in medical kennels, rerouting people traffic through the shelter, and monitoring this epidemic, none of the measures were eliminating the illness. Since the center's population was just under 300 dogs, the PRC took immediate action. With help from an international canine influenza expert, the department took the daunting and novel approach of shutting down the shelter and transporting all of the dogs to a temporary location off-site while scrubbing and deep cleaning the shelter for the dogs' return once they cleared the influenza. For the first time ever, entire kenneling was put together in a warehouse sign shop along with all feeding, cleaning, walking, and medical treatments. For approximately 30 days, the PRC, Hillsborough County Animal Control, and volunteers maintained both operations to get the dogs healthy for their return to the PRC. Shelter staff, veterinarians, and animal control all stepped up and gave 110% to care for all animals. These incredible actions led the Florida Animal Protection and Advocacy Association to award PRC with its outstanding Cooperative Achievement Award, which highlighted the intensive amount of teamwork provided by and performed by PRC staff, animal control, and volunteers. So congratulations to everyone on this huge, huge award. There is, however, more. The department was also recognized on a national level for this incredible accomplishment with the 2025 National Association of Counties Achievement Award. This honor focused on the PRC's emergency activation skills used during the flu epidemic, storm action response, and the department's continuity -- excuse me -- continuity of operations plan, known as COOP, when it's put into action. Ms. Waldeck, to be recognized on a state and national level is quite an achievement and well-deserved, and we congratulate you again. And at this time, I would like to invite you up to say a few words, and also, we're going to hold up the awards so that everyone can see them.
There you go. Got them both? Good morning, and thank you so much, Commissioner Cohen. Again, my name is Chelsea Waldeck, and I'm here today to speak on behalf of our amazing team at the Pet Resource Center. This event showcased the cooperability of county departments during emergencies and brought together teams from code enforcement's abatement team, animal control, communications, conservation and environmental lands management, parks and recreation, and facilities to pull off such an elaborate undertaking. Utilizing and updating PRC's continuity of operations plan was a prime example of why emergency planning is so important. Thank you to the EOC for your guidance, knowledge, and support for continuing to make Hillsborough a well-prepared community for any emergency that may arise. The staff not only endured extreme conditions and uncertainty in a situation that had never been taken on in the past, but did so showing compassion for one another, teamwork at the highest level, and adaptability to any number of challenges and changes that arose. From the team at the off-site location to the remainder of the team at PRC still caring for cats, deep cleaning the shelter, and attending to community needs, everyone took on roles far exceeding their normal job duties to ensure every pet and person's needs were met. These two awards are a true reflection of the hard work, compassion, unwavering dedication that PRC and animal control staff pour into caring for the pets in our community. Every day, our teams go above and beyond, not only meeting the basic needs of every animal in our care, but also ensuring they receive love, medical attention, enrichment, and the best possible chance at a happy future. These honors recognize the countless hours spent behind the scenes, the emotional investment in every animal's story, and the tireless commitment to improving their lives. Thank you to the commissioners for your continued support of PRC's mission and daily operations. The homeless pets of Hillsborough County deserve a second chance at a better life, and this county's commitment to providing the necessary resources to the staff and the community is truly inspiring. And finally, we want to thank the community for your understanding and patience during the outbreak event. We know the changes in operation can be challenging and that the uncertainty of the outcome for your potential new family member was stressful, but the kindness, support, and generosity that each and every one of you showed, our staff and our pets made the entire event much more manageable and provided a valuable roadmap for other municipalities to follow in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, why don't we invite everybody up to come take a picture?
Yes, we have several staff members here from all the teams that helped us, so yes, if you guys would like to come up.
Absolutely. Everyone come on up. Okay. Okay, now, this is a big trophy, so I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna hold it up. I'd like to ask Water Resources Director Lisa Ray and Greg Rollo, Plant Manager for the Northwest Regional Water Reclamation Facility, to please join us at the podium. Good morning.
So we'll have Greg hold it.
Okay. Sure. There you go. Okay. The Florida Water Environment Association's Earl B. Phelps Award honors wastewater -- good morning, good morning. -- honors wastewater treatment facilities that have maintained the highest removal of major pollution-causing substances prior to discharging treated waste. The awards are based on treatment classification and plant size, small, medium, or large, which ensures a fair comparison across facilities. I am proud to say that this year's award for outstanding wastewater treatment facility performance in the advanced wastewater treatment plant's large category is our very own Water Resources Department's Northwest Regional Water Reclamation Facility. The facility is a marvel in the county system with numerous innovations, built-in protections, and efficiencies. It originally was built in 1990 as a five-stage wastewater treatment plant with a permitted capacity of 5 million gallons a day. Today, it has a capacity of 30 million gallons per day. During the expansion in 2020, the Northwest facility installed a 5.5-megawatt natural gas-powered turbine that provides enough electricity to not only power the entire plant, but also the biosolids management facility and the nearby Fawn Ridge Water Plant. The natural gas turbine provides clean, reliable power and prevents power fluctuations, thus protecting sensitive equipment and reducing maintenance costs. Think about that. Think about what this community has been through with failing infrastructure and how significant and important this facility is and its resiliency is. In addition to reducing operating costs, covers were installed on the chlorine contact chambers. The covers prevent chlorine dissipation and reduce the amount of chlorine consumed. Biosolids from the Northwest Regional Wastewater Reclamation Facility are processed on-site by four screw presses, each capable of processing nine dry tons a day. The resulting product is further processed by a county contractor, and there are also backup mechanisms in case of mechanical issues. Additionally, Water Resources maintains a comprehensive sampling and testing process with an on-site lab. Safety is also paramount. The facility holds regular meetings for staff to discuss communications and safety topics, and every operator is required to attend. Northwest Regional WRF staff are trained in CPR, defensive driving, and other safety procedures. Hurricane preparedness is also a high priority. The facility has a plan for hurricanes and other disasters. Further, the maintenance department is divided into a preventative maintenance crew and a corrective crew. All employees play an important part in maintaining the cleanliness of the facility, and every effort is made to treat odors and present nuisance odors. In fact, the plant has three odor control systems. The Northwest Regional Water Reclamation Facility is an outstanding plant and operation in all phases, and the Phelps Award from the Florida Water Environment Association is richly deserved. No one should be surprised by this achievement. The county has won this prestigious award 13 times since 1997, which is why the department received two awards for this honor, one of which looks like the Stanley Cup. This is a remarkable standard of excellence. Ms. Ray, Mr. Rollo, congratulations to you. Congratulations to the entire staff. George, to you as well, and to our whole department, Ms. Wise, on this tremendous achievement. Ms. Ray, would you please say a few words?
Thank you, Commissioner Cohen. It is definitely an honor to be here today and to be recognized for the hard work that our team does on a daily basis. Their ongoing dedication to protecting the environment and our customers is extremely important, and we couldn't do it without their 24-hour-a-day work. And here with me, we have Rollo. He is the plant manager, Greg Rollo, and Toriano is the supervisor. So we are honored that they were able to join us. We do have staff at the plant right now, because it all has to be manned, so we have a representation of a few of our people, as well as their supervisors and managers are here, too. So I do appreciate this honor. We are honored to receive it, and Greg, I don't know if you'd like to say a few words as the plant manager, but if you don't, that's okay.
Hi, everybody. Greg Rollo, I'm the plant manager, like they keep saying. I was not ready for saying anything, but I would like to thank everybody in this room behind me and in front of me that has helped us. Usually wastewater plants are the unsung heroes of an environment. You never know we exist until we mess up. So as long as we continue to not mess up, you'll continue to not know we're there. But we're gonna keep doing the best we can. Thank you.
There's something called the five-minute rule, and if they go down for five minutes, you're gonna know it. And you guys just do an awesome job, and we really appreciate it. So congratulations again. Let's definitely take a picture, and let's invite others to come up as well.
The next recognition will be presented by Commissioner Bowles.
Not too bad. I was talking about the weight of these things. This is a big one. Carl, Mr. Carl Harness, would you mind joining me up here, sir? Carl Harness is our Chief Human Services Administrator. And before I go on script, I'm gonna go off-script. Uh-oh. Come on over here, man. Carl and I have known each other for about 22 years, and I've always known Mr. Harness to be a dedicated servant of the public, always professional, kind, compassionate, and certainly, your service here in Hillsborough County has been lauded and welcomed. For some reason, someone convinced him about 12 years ago, 13 years ago, that the grass was greener on the other side of the bay. But we got him back, and we've had him here longer than he was gone, and we're thankful for that, and I'm thankful for that, and I appreciate that. And I wanted to, I consider you a friend, because we've known each other for a long time, and I wanted to do this today, and that's what I requested, so.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely. So I, we'll get on with it, though, but I appreciate you, man.
Thank you, sir.
So Hillsborough County will host a major event in late October, the 100th, 11th Annual International City and County Management Association Conference, the ICMA. It is a professional organization that represents over 13,000 members and affiliates worldwide. Between 4,000 and 5,000 city and county administrators and assistants are expected to attend the conference. Planning this event was a huge undertaking, and we are excited that our own Carl Harness is the co-chair. He and the Florida City and County Management Association Conference Steering Committee have been hard at work on this conference for a couple of years now, establishing a core team of on-site volunteers, mobile workshops -- flip the page -- social networking events and special event opportunities for all attendees. Mr. Harness is a major proponent of regional cooperation, and while the conference requires that, it also calls for an even wider degree of cooperation and collaboration with the ICMA conference planning staff. For instance, several organizations and local other governments here are involved in coordinating these events and numerous other needs. 21 hotels in downtown Tampa and Ebor City will accommodate conference attendees. I like heads and beds. Let's get some bed tax here. In addition, on October 24th, local governments will participate in an ICMA Assistant Managers' Exchange, which features managers from other parts of the nation being matched with local counterparts for the day to tour our government facilities. The showcase area projects that this will happen. Earlier this year, the Local Conference Host Committee sponsored a special networking activity for over 90 members of the 2025 ICMA Annual Conference Education Committee who were in town to establish educational sessions for the conference. Did you have something to do with that, too? A little bit? Okay. Mr. Harness and his team hosted them. If I just read the next sentence, I would notice. No, I'm kidding. "With reception at the Amale Arena," now known as Benchmark Arena, right? "Followed by a lightning game." It was truly a fun experience. Mr. Harness has taken a lot of work helping arrange and coordinate these events, knowing his dedication and attention to detail. I am sure this conference will be the best yet for the International City and County Management Association. In recognition of this tremendous effort, the Florida City and County Management Association presented Mr. Harness with its 2025 "If You Care, You Do." That's something that you do. You do care, and I've seen that over the years. That award honors a member who goes above and beyond in his service to the association. Mr. Harness, congratulations on this tremendous achievement. It's heavy. Not too heavy.
Very heavy.
But you can club me with it if you wanted to. But congratulations on this tremendous achievement, and, man, I hope all the best for a fantastic conference and hopefully we are representative of who we are here, a good city. Thank you, sir. Would you like to have a few comments?
Thank you, Commissioner, and first off, I'd like to thank you, Commissioner Bowles, and the rest of the Board of County Commissioners and Administrator Wise for recognizing me during this ceremony. We're looking forward to hosting this event in October to highlight the attributes of Hillsborough County, City of Tampa, and Pinellas County. Although my name is on this plaque here on this award, make no mistake that it was definitely a group effort. It was definitely a group effort that took this on. And I would like to recognize some of those other folks that were a part of the host committee that worked on this. Coordinated by FCCMA CEO Casey Cook and Carol Russell, my co-host chair from Pinellas County, Barry Burton, Jill Silverboard from City of Temple Terrace, Carlos Baia from the City of Tampa, Osea Nguyen from Visit St. Pete, Catherine Reagan from Visit Tampa Bay, Jane Godfrey and Missy Walker, Bobby Green, Micah Maxwell, and from Florida League of Cities, Cindy Ryan and Laura Bush. This is a major endeavor. We're looking forward to hosting our professional managers that'll be coming from all over the world. As it says, ICMA represents 13,000 members in over 33 countries. So we're gonna do a good job. We're gonna highlight the area, and it's gonna be one of the best conferences that ICMA has ever seen. So with that, Commissioner, I thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Just you and me? Have you got anybody else here with you?
Our next award will be presented by Commissioner Cameron Sepeda. Commissioner, you're recognized.
With Patrick Menzey, Director of Children's Services, and Operations Manager Sarah Grimming, please join me at the podium. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning, good morning, good morning. And thank you for coming today. Agencies that achieve accreditation meet the highest national standards in practice excellence. For Hillsborough County Children's Services, this achievement has become a tradition. In May, Children's Services earned reaccreditation through the Council on Accreditation for the 15th consecutive year, a tremendous achievement. COA accreditation is a prestigious recognition in the field of human services. Agencies throughout the world seek this recognition, which involves a detailed review of an organization's practices, from how services are delivered to how the agency is managed. Reaccreditation shows that an organization continues to meet these high standards and is committed to ongoing improvement. Children's Services 15-year accreditation is a testament to the, to the department's steadfast commitment to excellence. In fact, the department's delivery of the highest quality of services benefits it during the accreditation process. For instance, during the last two accreditation cycles, Children's Services reaccreditation was expedited because of its excellent track record. There are many benefits to earning this designation. It enhances credibility, improves service quality, boosts staff development, helps attract funding, and ensures an agency stays in compliance with legal requirements and mandates. Further, COA accreditation is a powerful tool that reinforces that services are trusted, accountable, and guided by the best practices, ensuring that children and families in Hillsborough County continue to receive compassionate, effective care. Children's Services achievement should be, should be cheered throughout the entire county. I'm going to present the award right now. The award for you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And Mr. Menzey, congratulations to you and all your dedicated employees for everything you do to provide comfort and care to children. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Commissioner. Good morning. I want to first start off by thanking the board and Commissioner Cameron Sepeda for recognizing our accomplishment. You know, I think a lot of times, I'm up here, and Sarah, our operations manager is up here right now, receiving our plaque, but it's the hard work of the team that we have back on campus and around the county for our outpatient services that really are a testament to everything that we do. We're open 24 hours a day, seven days a week, on holidays through hurricane season. We're, you know, we never close. And so, you know, I, I think it's so important when we're able to be spoken of in a, in a positive light that we step up and share our story with, with everybody, with the community. We take pride in taking care of Hillsborough County's youth and the families that we serve. So just want to say thank you again to the board and leadership for continuing to support us and the mission that we have. So thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations. This one's harder.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Good morning, everyone. With Tina Young, please come forward. Of Project Link, and the Chair of the Back-to-School Coalition of Hillsborough County, and all of the coalition partners. No, you have a village. Come around, come on. We have space, come on. Okay. Again, good morning. I am honored today to highlight the important work that the organizations do to help protect the health and well-being of our children. It's truly Take a Village, Project Link, and the Back-to-School Coalition of Hillsborough, our, our community-based organization of partners dedicated to ensuring that all children of Hillsborough County have access to extensive health services. These services include immunization, school physicals, and other critical health screening. Indeed, the new school year has successfully begun, and the coalition and Project Link are ensuring that children are once again going to class healthy, happy, and excited to learn new things. It is my pleasure to present the following proclamation. It reads, "Whereas education is one of the most critical tools necessary for a child's upbringing and serves as a fundamental pillar for lifelong success; and whereas school physical and immunizations are mandatory for every child entering a Florida school for the first time; and whereas the Back-to-School Coalition of Hillsborough County is a collaboration of public agencies, local hospitals, nonprofit organizations, healthcare services group, the private sector, and public school system, all united in the mission to ensure that no child misses the first day of school due to the lack of health care and access; and whereas since 2005, the Back-to-School Coalition of Hillsborough County has organized a series of clinics at convenient locations across Hillsborough County to provide no-cost school physical and immunization to kindergarten through 12th grade students entering a Florida school for the first time, are meeting current student vaccination requirements; and whereas this year's clinics were held from July 12th to August 16th. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida does hereby declare August 2025 as Back-to-School Readiness Month in Hillsborough County, extends its best wishes to the Back-to-School Coalition of Hillsborough County for successes in their efforts, and encourages parents to take advantages of this unique opportunity as they prepare their children for the school year, executed this 27th day of August 2025." Tina, here's your proclamation, and come on to the, to the mic. And I'm also going to ask School Board Member Lynn Gray, will you say a few words as well?
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Good morning. Thank you, Commissioner Myers and all the other commissioners for this honor this summer. Project Link and our partners served 1,025 children across seven back-to-school health clinics hosted throughout Hillsborough County. As described in the proclamation, our mission is to ensure that children without health care coverage can meet medical requirements for school enrollment. For many of these children, this, these clinics represent their first and sometimes only contact with a health care provider. On the average, a school physical can cost $50 to $75, and required immunizations can range from 150 to 3,000, 300, sorry, per child when not covered by insurance. Based on these estimates, the Back-to-School Health Clinic generated an approximate taxpayer savings of $200,000 to $250,000 in health care costs. Without this program, many families without health care coverage would likely have sought services through hospital emergency rooms, are gone without care, leading to higher long-term costs to this community. We are able to deliver these vital services through our strong partnerships represented here with me today. Beyond serving our students, this initiative also provides professional development and clinical training opportunities for our future medical professionals. Tasks completed through the clinics included administering school physicals, vaccinations, updating Florida shot records, transferring foreign health records, offering translation and interpreting services. I am truly honored to be a part of such a dedicated collaborative that gives time, energy, and service to, to this community. Project Link serves as the administrative arm to the Back-to-School Coalition, and our coalition partners are USF Health Physicians Assistance Program, College of Pharmacy, College of Nursing, USF Residency Program, USF Department of Pediatrics, USF Tampa General Physicians, Tampa General Health Park, Bay Care Hospital and their mobile clinic, Hillsborough County Public Schools Health Services, Florida Department of Health, University of Tampa Nursing, South Tampa, I'm sorry, South University PA and Nursing Programs, Jersey College of Nursing, Can Do, Orlando Health and Affective Disease Prevention Network. We are also deeply grateful for the financial and in-kind support provided by Hillsborough County, Sunshine Health, Advent Health, Humana Healthcare, Florida Blue, Aetna Publics Supermarket, Hillsborough County Tax Collector's Office, Kiwanis Club of Tampa Bay, TECO Energy, Dental Quest, Smyrna's Feet, First Choice Pharmacy, 101.5 The Vibe, Superintendent Van Ayers, Hillsborough County Public Schools Marketing Department, their hosting principals, technology team, custodial staff, and my operational team, Jonathan Means and Andrew Madison. Together, we are making our children in our community start a school year healthy, confident, ready to learn, and also saving taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars in affordable health care costs. At this time, I would like to yield the floor to our School Board Member Lynn Gray.
Well, a lot has been said. I wanted to thank the Honorable Board of County Commissioners for this time, and the Honorable Gwen Myers. Appreciate it. The Hillsborough County Public Schools, we had our back to school went smooth as silk. And one of the reasons is because of the wonderful helpers who made sure that the mental and physical well-being of our students were, had immunizations, had physical, physical tests, back and forth, up and down, eyesight tests, all of this was for free. And the reality is, many of our students have barriers, health, physical, mental, social, emotional barriers. So when we have this wonderful force in Project Link, we are just, those are tremendous assets for our students. And now, how many, Dr. Ross, I want to recognize you. How many students did we put through on these health clinics?
25.
A thousand, yeah, over 1,025. Thanks, Tina Young. So at any rate, just, just know that we appreciate everything that every one of you do. Dr. Ross, our Director of Nursing and USF, and Jersey College, I saw all of you, one way or another. So thank you all, and thank you, Honorable Gwen Myers.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll go to the back now. We'll give everyone their...
I'll grab those.
Yeah. All the way to the back. We save room in the center.
Act like you love each other. I want to thank all of you for being here today, and I would like to personally thank our award recipients for their invaluable work that they do to help make Hillsborough County a great place to live, work, and play. Safe travels, everyone, to your next destination.